For September sixteenth, roll call, or join before the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here. Is there anything we can do about that echo? Oh, okay. Good, thank you. Okay, our first order of business is we have a proclamation in recognition of Constitution Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-first, or third, 2024, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies our principles of limited government in the republic dedicated to the rule by law, and whereas September seventeenth, 2024, marks the two-hundred-thirty-seventh anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by constitutional convention, whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which commemorates it and, whereas public law nineteen fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Tammy Trent, on the behalf of the City Council and the City of Fortuna, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through twenty-third, 2024, to be Constitution Week in the City of Fortuna and ask our citizens to reaffirm the idea of the framers of the Constitution, of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven, signed this day. And Catherine will be accepting this.
Thank you very much, I appreciate this. Can I say a couple?
Please do.
Catherine Culver, eleven fifty, West Drive, Fortuna. I am a member of the
Is that microphone on?
Is there a green light on?
Okay.
Am I okay?
Yes.
I am a member of the Yule River Valley chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, and I want you to know that the National Society
Wait just a second, the microphone's not on.
It's on, but it's not.
There's green lights there, but
It should be on.
More directly into it. But I want everybody to know that the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, nonpolitical women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children. Members are all lineal descendants of those who supported the cause of independence in the Revolutionary War. I'd like to invite everyone to a bell ringing in commemoration of the Constitution's framing tomorrow, twelve forty-five, we're meeting in front of the Veterans Hall. You'll see we've got the Constitution banner out there, and we have bells for everyone. At one o'clock, you'll all be ringing our bells for exactly one minute in that commemoration. So, once again, thank you for this proclamation, Mayor and Council, I appreciate it. It reminds us how lucky we are to have this start here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the introduction of a new utility superintendent, Jason.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Brendan Byrd, Public Works Director and City Engineer, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce Jason Johnson, who is our new utility superintendent in the Utilities Division of Public Works. So, although new to this position, Jason's not new to the city, he's been with us since 2017, so a little over seven years, and during that time, he's really, he came in ready to run in our Utilities Division where he's been ever since, came in as a Utilities Two, and has moved as far through the progression as he can, has gotten all of his certifications, has really always been a go-getter, always really interested in moving things forward and finding problems, and not just dealing with them in the moment, but how do we, you know, move towards a better process, a better fix, a more proactive fix, things of that nature. So, we're very pleased to see that, you know, continuing his career and continuing his advancement in the Utilities Division is something he was interested with in the, in the City of Fortuna. So, with that, I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce or reintroduce him to you, the Council, and also note that he's a, he's a local, he grew up in Carlotta, he lived in Fortuna for a number of years, and he now resides down in Scotia. Well, we'll all admit the weather may be a teeny bit better down there, I do know that he somewhat misses his utility bill from here in Fortuna, so.
I do.
And that being said, I just wanted to welcome Jason Johnson.
So, as Brendan already said, I'm Jason Johnson, I've been with the Utilities Department for about seven and a half years, and I look forward for this opportunity to lead this department, bring some good organization and planning for the future. So, thank you.
Welcome, and thank you. Our next one is introduction of a new Administrative Assistant Two for the Parks and Recreation, and we're welcoming back Kalen.
Good evening. Am I? Yeah, I'm gonna step over there. Right. Good evening. Got me there? Yeah. All right, I'm Heather Stevens, Parks and Recreation Director. Happy to be here this evening to introduce Kalen Stainbrook, and yes, indeed, she is returning. She's worn many hats for the city, she's been a police dispatcher, a community service officer, she helped with FBID when it first came over to the city years ago, she's been a conference center coordinator, and now, we're very happy to have her as our Admin Assistant Two. She's a Fortuna local, born and raised, she has three children, she also is a, has managed an adult league softball, so she's a big softball player for the last fourteen years, and I asked her for a few things about herself, and she said that she enjoys spreadsheets and organizing, and I want to just say, we enjoy her enjoying those things. So, I welcome Kalen.
I'm back.
We're happy.
Yes, I've already been enjoying my time the last couple of weeks at the Parks and Rec Department, and it's nice to see some familiar faces and some new faces in this room, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity in welcoming me back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next introduction is of a new Parks Maintenance Worker Two, Forrest.
All right, I'm back again. I don't see Forrest here this evening, but I was anticipating him, but I will go ahead and give an introduction, and you can welcome him when you see him out and about. Forrest joined our team in May, he answered a recruitment for a regular part-time maintenance worker, and he joined our team at that time. In the next month or so, we had one member of our staff, a full-time member, moved into the Public Works Department, and that freed up a space, so we did an internal recruitment, we had three members apply for a full-time job, Forrest was one of them, and Forrest made that recruitment and came on board full-time just before our busy special event season, so he just jumped right in. I can tell you that Forrest is also born and raised in Fortuna, he's raising four children with his girlfriend, he loves dogs, this is a good thing, if you're a Parks and Rec worker, he loves spending time in the woods and outdoors, he is a lifelong automated, automotive enthusiast and mechanic, one of, oh, and he came to us from North Coast Children's Services, where he worked on twenty-plus sites, all the way from Crescent City to Willow Creek, doing maintenance work on those various sites, so he comes with a lot of experience. And one of my favorite memories so far with Forrest was Rodeo Week. Rodeo Week, Forrest came to work with his boots on and his hat on, and he was ready to go. So, happy to have him on the team.
Our next introduction is of new operator in training, Nick.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Andy Bowles, I'm the Chief Plant Operator, and I'd like at this time to introduce Nicholas Chastain. Nick comes to us from Vallejo, he's been here a couple of weeks, and so far doing a good job, he has, already has his distribution and treatment licenses, so he's got to step up there, and seems to be ready to go every day. Nick?
Hello, my name's Nick Chastain, and I would like to extend my gratitude to the City of Fortuna for providing me an opportunity to become proficient in water treatment. It's a subject that I've been passionate about for a few years, as you can see by my certificates that I've earned, so thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome to Fortuna. Okay, our next item is, let's see, we got all of those, oral comments from the public. Anybody from the public that would like to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda? You have three minutes to do so. I guess that's not going to be an oral comment. Okay, see, and then we'll close oral comment, and we'll go to consent calendar, we have fifteen items on our consent calendar, all of the department monthly reports, report of dispersment, approval of full-time classification pay scale for fiscal year 2024-25, resolution 2024-30, approve the investment policy for fiscal year 2024-25, approve the July first, 2024 to June thirtieth memorandum of understanding for the Fortuna Police Association, Council review and approve of commission application for, that one is Parks and Recreation, I believe, and adopt the City of Fortuna's Workplace Violence Prevention Program. Anybody want to pull any of those?
K and M, please.
K and M?
And I would like Al, please.
Okay, do you want to go ahead?
I'm going to abstain from K and M.
Okay, K and?
M.
Okay. Okay, and Al?
I just had a quick question for Aaron, if we could. Moving to the Treasurer's Report on the Investment Policy for Fiscal Year 24-25. Good evening, Aaron.
Good evening.
I didn't have a chance to talk to you about this, I normally do, but I just wanted some clarification. So, we're looking at the Treasurer's Report as of June thirtieth, 2024, and this goes back to the fiscal year beginning in 2023, so this report is for the past fiscal year. Okay, and so it shows the cost value and then market value, cost value being what we paid with the investment or for the investment, what we bought for that investment, and the market value of what it is as of June thirtieth, 2024, correct?
Correct, yep, as if you sold it today, or as of June thirtieth.
As of June thirtieth. So, and I know that these investments have been for a longer period of time than just this last fiscal year, and so that's what the effective yield indicates is from inception to the end of 2024 fiscal year.
The, correct, yeah, the effective yield is what we earned for the last quarter, so in this case, it would actually be April first to June thirtieth, the effective yield is what we earned for that quarter.
Okay, so with regard to some of these investments, like the Leif Fund and then Edward Jones, Edward Jones shows from the cost value to the market value, a loss of one hundred and fourteen thousand and some odd dollars, and Leif then being eighty-six thousand and seven twelve. Is that going back to inception, or is that just this last fiscal year?
That's as of June thirtieth.
It is.
So, yeah, and one of the reasons why Edward Jones is showing a loss is because we invest in five-year CDs, and so that goes back three, four, or five years ago when we purchased them, when the rates, interest rates were lower, and so now, obviously, the interest rates are at an all-time high, and so if we were to sell them today, we would be selling them at today's rates and not the rates that we bought them four years ago. But I will just say, historically, Edward Jones has, the effective yield that we've received through Edward Jones has far exceeded both Leif and the Treasury Obligation sweep, our other two accounts that we have, and so it's just kind of a weird timing, you know, difference where we're at in the economy right now, where rates are at an all-time high.
Okay, so that would have been effective, I mean, the effective yield would have been better other than this last year?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar except for K and M.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Calendar items excluding K and M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need to approve K and M.
Also approved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving into City Council business. Our first item is first reading of the General Plan and zoning map amendments for three parcels, ordinance 2024-771. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm just going to pull up my presentation. Hopefully.
Hopefully. Trying to get it in presentation mode. There we go. So as the lovely mayor mentioned, tonight we are evaluating two General Plan Amendments and rezones. They are two separate owners involving several parcels. And I will get into that as we go through the presentation. So the total aggregate change in land use designation is just under two acres for all of this. So we, I want to make sure that we keep that in mind, that this is, these are not huge parcels that we are talking about. They're relatively small areas. And the changes are from residential general plan use designations to commercial. And that's based on the applicant's desire to achieve certain things on their parcel, which I'll get into more. I went too fast. I'm going to use the arrows. Okay, so the regulatory setting for General Plan Amendments. California code allows a general plan, which is considered a city's, like a city's constitution, if you will. It provides all of the long-range plans that guide physical development. And the general plan can be amended four times per year. So we have to be selective when we bring things forward. And in this case, we've packaged these two projects so that it will only count as one of our allowed general plan amendments. And this is the first general plan amendment of the calendar year 2024, which is how these are counted. So here is just a picture of the existing general plan land use diagram. And on the right, you can see the proposed, and it gives you an idea of the, where the parcels are and how, it just logically makes sense. What they're trying to do is expand the commercial land use. And as you can see, it's contiguous with what is already zoned commercial. I shouldn't say zoned. That already has the general plan land use designation of commercial. We'll get to zoning after general plan. So the commercial general planned land use designation, this gives, and the staff report goes into a little bit more detail and has the same chart. And basically, the important thing here is that the commercial land use designation, it allows the applicants to achieve what they are trying to do. And I go into each, each particular project as we move through. So the Leonardo General Plan Land Use Diagram Amendment, and I'm using the last name of the applicant and property owner. So their request is to amend the General Plan Land Use Diagram for about .81 acres. Now, this is over two parcels, and those parcels currently have a general plan land use designation of residential very low and rural residential. There's two different zoning on the two different parcels. So they're going to retain the existing rural residential general planned land use on the eastern portion of the parcel. And that's where there's going to be potentially additional residential development. So the Stenquist General Planned Land Use Diagram Amendment is basically doing the same thing. It's a larger area, it's all in one parcel, but it's 1.1 acre, and it's changing that designation from residential very low to commercial. And again, the, on this one, the residential very low general plan land use designation will remain on the southern portion of the parcel, which is developed with a single-family home and commercial shop. It's important to note that these changes do not result in a huge amount of increased development density because the FAR, the floor area ratio, between residential very low is .30, whereas commercial it's .35. So it's pretty negligible. It won't increase population, but it could increase sales tax. So. So with that, I'll go into the zoning map amendments. In order to achieve the ultimate goal of the property owners, the zoning has to be changed. And in order to change the zoning, we have to change the general plan to be consistent with that request. So onward. So the regulatory setting for the rezone is our Fortuna Municipal Code, which provides the procedures for amending the zoning text or map. We're in the process of doing that now. And the city zoning regulations do not prohibit the split zoning of city parcels. So this shows you the cumulative map change. Again, it's the same areas. And again, it's bringing that commercial thoroughfare zoning district, which is an implementing zoning district of the commercial general planned land use, which we just talked about providing an amendment to, and will increase the ability for the property owner to meet what he is hoping to do, what they are hoping to do. So in the commercial thoroughfare zone, it allows retail, wholesale, highway, and heavy commercial uses along with the other uses provided here. The Leonardo rezone, this is the one where there's two parcels that we talked about in the General Plan Amendment section. And both of them are undeveloped and located east of Ronerville Road and north of Gulickson Drive. This particular applicant is aspiring to provide somewhat of a gentle commercial transition zone between the existing heavy commercial uses that are already there because he envisions potentially subdividing and creating residential units in the rest of the parcel, which will remain general plan amendment and zoning appropriate for that. And it's important to note that in the CT District, residential uses are conditionally allowed. So we're not taking away the ability for someone to do residential uses in the commercial thoroughfare zone. We're just opening up the opportunity to do the things that these folks are trying to do with their parcels. And the surrounding uses already are commercial to three directions and single-family residential to the east. This shows you the access that will be used to go through to the area. It's existing, and as you can see, it's already commercially developed. And so this would just be kind of an extension of that to the back. Future residential development will require different access. That's Brendan's wheelhouse, though. So we'll deal with that when we get there. So any proposed development in the commercial thoroughfare zone will be evaluated for compatibility with and conditioned to protect existing and future development in the neighboring residential zones. And I could say it's going to be the same thing on both slides because, interestingly, both of these projects are looking to do the same thing. They're changing from a very low-density residential area to, you know, a small area of additional commercial. So the Stenquist rezone, the details on that one. It rezones 1.1 acres from the R110 zoning district to commercial thoroughfare. As I mentioned, there's already an existing single-family residence, single-car garage, and a 5,662-square-foot commercial shop. And that shop is what was the impetus for these requests because the applicant would like to upgrade electrical system. And that's not permitted under the residential zoning because it, the residential electrical panel goes to the residence, and to create an additional panel indicates that it's a commercial use. And therefore, by going through this process, the applicant would be able to get that electrical system upgrade. And any future development of that site, as mentioned, would require additional review, potentially a conditional use permit, that type of thing. So here's the existing conditions. As you can see, there's a beautiful little existing single-family residence. And then to the left, you can see the shop, which is already screened, which we would require otherwise. So I'm excited that that's already in place. But you can see that in the picture on the right, the area behind the shop and throughout that area is where the potential commercial development could evolve. There is a 50-foot streamside management area buffer around Jamison Creek that helps to protect any neighboring residential uses. And again, future development of the site is subject to evaluation for compatibility with existing and potential growth. The southern portion of the parcel that houses the existing residents will retain the existing residential, single-family zone. I want to note that we did receive public comment, more of an inquiry from someone who lives adjacent to this parcel, wanting to make sure that if they chose to, for example, switch out their mobile home or anything like that, that this development would not affect them. And it would not, so. So this, these two projects have already gone to the Planning Commission. On July 23rd, the Planning Commission approved the Leonardo General Plan Land Use Diagram Amendment and rezone. And then on September 10th, the Planning Commission did the same for the Stenquist General Plan Land Use Diagram Amendment and rezone. The project, the projects, the General Plan Amendments and rezoning are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because it is, it can be seen with certainty that the actual amendments and rezones do not cause any changes to the environment. And in fact, any development increase, as I mentioned, is very negligible based on the slight change in the FAR. Also, any future development of the sites will be subject to evaluation for SECA compliance. Most likely would be exempt and not need any, you know, further review, but it is something we would look at when projects come forward. So with that, the Community Development Department recommends that the City Council introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance to amend the General Plan Land Use Diagram from residential very low and rural residential to commercial, and the rezoning from residential estates and single, residential, single-family to commercial thoroughfare. Of .81 acres of assessors' parcel numbers and 1.1 acres of assessors' parcel number and find the amendments exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. Any questions from Council?
I do. I know previously we discussed the noise ordinance, and we were talking about amending the thing. My question is, it seems like it's late in the year, and we're probably not going to run into that problem. But if we wanted to amend that, this being one, do you think that we'd make it through the rest of the year on our general plan amendments?
Yes, I know for sure we will have a general plan amendment related to the Mill District specific plan coming forward. The, if we were to want to do the noise ordinance as a general plan amendment and change the zoning ordinance, we would like to bring that to you guys as a study session to make sure that we brought something that was agreeable to the Council and represented the needs of the community. So let us know.
Okay, any other questions?
I've got a couple of quick questions. Going off of that, when we do get to the point of the noise ordinance, maybe we can wrap that along with the re, the issue with the Mill Creek because that would be, you know, an issue there as well, or it could be.
Could be very timely.
Yeah, okay. Going to the Leonardo rezone existing conditions, the photograph that you had?
Let me go back to that. This one?
That one. So, and I understand that this is just a request to amend and rezone. So the actual development is going to be down the road. But am I understanding and looking at this picture that the residential issues that they're talking about or possible residential division or subdivision would be further back behind this?
That's correct, and that would require its own evaluation and different access.
And also require updating the road and upgrading access and those kinds of things, correct?
That would be up to Brendan, honestly, whether this particular access point would need to be upgraded or if it would be completely separated from the residential and access taken from one of the different roads.
Okay, certainly, because the road certainly isn't up to code.
That is correct.
Okay, and then the other question that I had was on the Stenquist existing conditions?
Okay. Yes.
That one. So I understand the commercial portion, but the residential portion, that's going to be left the way it is?
Yes, correct.
And no additional residents on that parcel, correct?
That's correct. However, per California code, the property owner could bring in an ADU less than 1,200 square feet and/or add a attached junior accessory dwelling. But not, at this point, there's no application or discussion of subdividing or doing anything more on that lot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from Council? Okay, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. Any, if any in the public have a comment on this item? C and N will close public comment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to hold the first reading of Ordinance 2024-771. Read by title only and continue the public hearing to October 7th, 2024 to conduct the second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ordinance 2024-771. An ordinance of the Fortuna City Council amending the General Plan Land Use Diagram from residential very low and rural residential to commercial, and the rezoning from residential estates and residential, single-family to commercial thoroughfare of 0.81 acres of assessors' parcels numbers 202-092-006 and 202-092-003, and 1.1 acres of assessors' parcel number and finding the amendments exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Okay, our next item of business is a word of professional service contract for Kenmar Interchange. Staff report, please.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for the time this evening, Council. Let me get my, let me get my presentation up and running as well. So I'm very excited to come back for one of our interchange improvement projects. Over the last several years, we've had a lot of activity advancing these forward. And this particular evening will be focused on our Kenmar Road and US 101 interchange improvement project, and specifically the recommendation that the Council award a professional services contract to GHD for our next phases of project work, which are our engineering design and right-of-way acquisition phase. So as many folks here know, I'm assuming everyone, actually, the city of Fortuna, about 60, 65 years ago, was bisected by the construction of Highway 101 when it was installed in its current alignment. Of course, Highway 101 used to run right down Main Street and the boulevard in Fortuna. But since then, the highway was installed, and the city was provided three interchanges with Highway 101, connecting them to local roads. Those started in the north at Main Street. They go down to our 12th Street interchanges, and then they end in the south at our Kenmar interchange. So shown here in the pop-up is a, is an aerial overview of our Kenmar interchange, which also includes the connection to Riverwalk Drive and the Riverwalk area, as shown on the west, all of the on-and-off ramps in between the local roads and the highway. And then, of course, it includes our extension going out Kenmar, coming into town. Also included in here, as shown, is the park-and-ride facility, the county's road, which is Eel River Drive, the former Northwest Pacific Railroad right-of-way, which is currently the Great Redwood Trail Agency right-of-way, and the southern portion of the former Palco Mill Site. So some existing conditions photos. And what these really convey is kind of a design standard and a construction implementation standard that was much more consistent with development 60, 65 years ago. As you can see, the overall geometries of our interchanges, but especially at Kenmar, they're really limited. They have poor site distance. They have unconventional geometries in general. They get very busy. These interchanges were designed and built at a time when the city's population was about 4,000. And, you know, the supporting population in the other communities that frequently come to Fortuna was significantly lower as well. So in today's world, with today's demands and vehicle demands and non-motorized demands, they get kind of chaotic down there. There's no, and, oh, I shouldn't say no, there's limited stop control. So depending on the time of day and how many people are trying to move through it, it can get to be kind of a wild scene down there. One of the bigger One of the bigger things that wasn't an issue when the freeway went in was non-motorized connectivity across the freeway. So at that time, west of the freeway was principally used as gravel mining and uses for the mill, and the residential areas were principally on the east side of the freeway. You know, now, the Riverwalk area is very tourist-serving, it has restaurants, it has the conference center, it has the river, and the east side of the highway is principally where our residential neighborhoods are. And right now, of course, to go on either side of the freeway or to enjoy both sides of Fortuna, if you don't have a car, you're a little bit out of luck. So recognizing some of these deficiencies through the years, staff and the councils of past have been pushing to move forward projects that would improve these interchanges, make them more modern in their design and their implementation. And that really started in the 2010 General Plan and General Plan Environmental Impact Report. So in the traffic modeling at that time, you know, everybody knew we had issues there, we had congestion there, but really when we sat down and put pen to paper, and I guess it was a computer at that time, it wasn't that long ago, we did the traffic modeling and really started to realize that the issue is only going to get worse through the planned growth of the city, through the development of the mill site, through all the different factors that are going to bring more traffic to Fortuna. So recognizing that, that was really the catalyst to take us down a path where over about the last 10 or 12 years, we've done a number of studies and had a number of efforts to push forward what those improvements would be and how we could do them and how we could fund them and implement them. So that has moved through our John Campbell Memorial Greenway Study, our Highway Connectivity Study, which I'll touch on in a moment, through various safety plans and through some project study reports we've done. Realistically, what our goal is consistent with what our approach is at our 12th Street interchange and other areas. We want to improve traffic operations for motorized and non-motorized users, we want to reduce congestion, we want to provide more of an entry gateway into the city with better wayfinding, and ultimately just make it a better, safer, and more modern amenity for the community. So coming out of the general plan, the first study that was done that really kind of pointed us in the direction of where we are currently going today is what we would call our 2016 Complete Streets Connectivity Study. This was done under a grant that was administered through HCOG, and the goal of the study was to identify a complete streets approach to how we could retrofit or otherwise fix these interchanges. And when I say these, I mean the Kenmar interchange and the 12th Street interchanges, so that we could fix the traffic issues and really be able to provide the infrastructure for non-motorized users across the freeway as well. So in that report, we looked at three main design alternatives, the first being existing condition or the no-build alternative, so the worst one, we'll just call it that, the next being signalized intersections, which is a pretty conventional approach as well, and the last being a few different approaches with roundabouts. So ultimately, looking at cost, construction costs, long-term costs, the ability for the improvements to operate well into the future, the preferred alternative was selected as the double roundabout, what's also referred to as a dog bone roundabout. So springboarding from the 2016 connectivity study, in 2018, the city applied for it and received $550,000 in grant funding from the State Transportation Improvement Program, also abbreviated as the STIP, and that was to complete what we would call the zero phase or the project allocation and environmental documentation phase in the Caltrans delivery schedule of the project. So the city received funding, the city entered into a cooperative agreement with Caltrans, we developed and released a request for proposals, and ultimately were able to obtain and award a contract to GHD to complete that phase of work. That phase had primary activity through 2020 into 2023, where we completed and adopted the project environmental document, which was an ISMND, and the phase of work for the entire, or that phase of the project work completed in February 2024, so earlier this year, with the completion of the project report. So springboarding off of the environmental document and recognizing the time of year we are in, we were approaching the next cycle of STIP allocation requests. So the STIP is, there's a cycle every two years, there's essentially competitive discretionary funding from the state that gets allocated to the local transportation planning agencies, of which ours is HCOG, and from there, it gets sent out basically for requests for proposals in some sense, in order for local agencies to be able to apply for funding. So recognizing we were about to close out the zero phase of work for Kenmar, we saw an opportunity to jump in and apply for some funding and hopefully be able to continue the forward momentum we had on the project with minimal downtime. So in late 2023, we applied for $2.6 million, which was the anticipated funding amount in order to complete our engineering design phase and to complete our right-of-way acquisition phase. Fortunately, we had the support of members of the Technical Advisory Committee, the support of the HCOG Board, and ultimately that went up to the California Transportation Commission earlier this year, where the city was ultimately awarded the full $2.6 million to advance the next steps of our project. So with that pathway kind of set and the funding being realized or next to realized, staff put together a request for proposals in May of 2024, and this was for our next phase of work. So we released an RFP for our initial phase of work, that contract only covered the preliminary or the project allocation and environmental design phase, so we had to go out to a new RFP. And again, we issued that in May and had a proposal due date in early July. And at that time, the city did receive one proposal from GHD, who was the previous consultant who worked on the project. So I will say, whenever we get one proposal or one bid or one anything, you know, we always want to think critically about it. It's not very surprising, and it's something that we've seen on the staff side locally in Fortuna, but also countywide. GHD is really the only qualified local consultant that can deliver these types of projects and that are actively working in, you know, in this market throughout California and throughout the world, really. So even though we only have one, GHD was able to complete their previous phase of work for the city very well, ultimately actually came in under budget, even though the project took a number of years to complete, and we would more than recommend that the council approve and award authorization to GHD based on their proposal. So moving briefly into the fiscal impact here, so the city obtained $2.6 million in STIP funding, as I mentioned before, which is effectively a grant, so no city funds are actually being used to push this project forward, other than the funds that pay city staff salaries that are participating in managing the project. GHD's proposal, as they've put forward, matches our available budget. So as you'll see in the staff report, what we are proposing is a contract award of $2.1 million, which is their proposed amount to complete the engineering design and right-of-way phases, and that is allocated in the numbers, as you'll see in the slide here, about $1.9 million for design and about $170,000 for right-of-way support. So the gap in between those two numbers, 2.1 and 2.6, is half a million dollars, which that is the amount that we have in our funding request through the STIP that is reserved ultimately to be used for right-of-way acquisition. So part of the phase is to get support from the consultant, develop the figures, establish values, and do things to move towards, you know, making offers for right-of-way, which would be part of final design and part of being able to construct the project in the future, is obtaining the right-of-way to do it, and that's what that extra $500,000 is for, that is part of the funding request, but is outside of the contract that's being proposed this evening. So with that, I'll end with my recommendation, which is that the council authorized the interim city manager to award a professional services contract for the Kenmar Road and Highway 101 interchange improvement project, and have established a contract value not to exceed $2.1 million. And other than that, I appreciate the time. I want to acknowledge Josh Wolf, he is one of our longtime on-call consulting engineers and has been a consistent project manager for our interchange projects. He's here this evening and can answer any questions, should the council have any on the technical side or about GHD's proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Comment?
Okay.
I just want to say, it's been a long time coming to get to this point, and it's been an inconvenience, safety, moving through the intersections and keeping cars going, traffic congestion, and we've taken bites out of it as we go along. This is a big bite to get to this point, and now we can put our minds on construction dollars. And believe me, I've dropped hints all along the way. You've probably heard, that guy's making comments and asking questions, what's he doing?
We like comments and questions.
But it's a good thing, and it is safety for the driving and walking and biking public. So thanks for all the work being done on this and seeing it move forward.
Also, a comment. Through the years, we've seen, you know, pushes, and especially for when we were doing the general plan update, there was a lot of discussion and there was interest, then interest would wane, and then it would come back. About four years ago, we were kind of stalled, there was not a lot of discussion at that point. Any planning, development, or talk of development was pretty much nonexistent, so things were kind of dormant. And I had a discussion with Merritt at that point, and he got excited about digging up some developers and moving forward with that development, and he did that. The council got on board with that. I think there was one person who was reluctant, but the majority of the council moved that aside and pushed for this development. And this is kind of the first step that we can actually see that there will be development, you know, down the road and within, you know, a relatively short period of time. We're still talking, you know, years down the road, but at least this is a step in that direction for actually getting the thing developed. So I'm excited about this, and it's a long time in coming, so I'm glad to see this happening.
Thank you. I'm excited because when we get this plan all done, it puts us in a better position to get grant funding for this project.
Yes.
So is this about two years?
I believe the schedule right now, and Josh could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have an 18-month schedule, which is, you know, pretty typical moving through these. So, you know, as we move through it, we don't have construction funding, of course, but we'll continually be able to use this as that extra opportunity to leverage the construction funding opportunities and the grants as they are available, so.
Another thing I like about this project is I cringe when I see the CCCs trying to get from that side of the freeway over into town, because a lot of them will walk over there, so this is going to be really nice for that, too.
Yeah.
It's going to make it a lot more walkable.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public have a?
Check, check, check.
Have a comment on this item? Our mic works now?
Mic is open.
We'll see, and then we'll close public comment.
Madam Mayor, I would be pleased to make a motion. With your approval.
Oh, yes, I thought, well, okay.
I would move to authorize the city manager to award a professional services contract for the Kenmar Road and Highway 101 interchange improvement project for a total contract value not to exceed $2.1 million.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So our next item is city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor Trent and council members. Some upcoming meetings that your council may be interested are your own meetings on October 7th and October 21st. Planning Commission meetings are scheduled for September 24th and October 8th at 6:00 PM. There is a Measure E meeting tomorrow evening, September 17th at 5:30 PM, and then again on January 21st. The RONER Community Recreation and Park District will meet on October 2nd at 2:30 PM, and the Fortuna Business Improvement District will meet on October 22nd at 8:30 AM. There is a special shout-out to the Save the Fortuna Theater group. I met with Linda Rasmussen, who is a Fortuna resident, who's working to establish a community group to save the Fortuna Theater that's on Main Street, and Linda is making some progress. She has an email at savearfortunatheater@gmail.com. She also has a Facebook page at save.fortuna.theater. So give Linda and her community group a follow or an email, she'd love to see some more supporters. And they're likely to come to the city council on October 7th, not the 6th, that's a Sunday. Apparently I'm date-challenged when I'm writing a verbal report. In addition, I attended the Fortuna Chamber mixer on August 21st. Myself and Chief Day have done several Measure P presentations at the Fortuna Chamber luncheon and the Fortuna Fire Department. Heather Stevens, your Parks and Recreation Director, and myself met with Clint Dewey to better understand parks and school facility usage across both agencies. I have also met with and received proposals from two consultants on assistance with the Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District that can potentially help pay for some of the things that we just heard about from our Public Works Director. I hope to have a contract to you by the second meeting in October. I also have attended a series of meetings on the franchise agreement with our consultants, and also had a meeting with CalRecycle on our compliance with SB 1383. Myself and all of your wonderful department heads, we participated in the city council candidate orientation on September 5th. I have also had the pleasure of having lunch with the wind energy representatives from RWE and Vineyard Offshore. These are both companies that have leases for offshore wind off our coast. And then on September 13th, I attended the Wellness Center meeting on the RONER Recreation District's possible development of a community pool, and in addition, attended my first Recreation District meeting on September 4th. On Friday, I had the pleasure of attending my first CalCities Redwood Region meeting and heard some great presentations on regional housing and state housing legislation, and then, of course, I've had many meetings with staff over the course of several weeks, and will continue to do so. And that concludes my city manager report.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any future agenda items?
I would like to add, discussing the possibility of doing an advisory committee to update our policies and procedures. It hasn't been done since 2017.
Okay.
So I'd like to have that added.
Is that okay with council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you put that on the list?
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll go to council reports. Councilmember Conley.
Thank you. I was unable to attend the last meeting, so I don't have much of a report, besides school is in full swing and sports are happening, and I don't get to see anybody. So if you're not at my sporting event, I'm sorry, I don't get to see you.
Councilmember Losi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I haven't attended any meetings, and I'm happy to say that I'm officially off of LAFCO as of the middle of last month, so. They did appoint a couple of city representatives, I don't recall who those people are, but I'm just happy to be off. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I enjoyed my time while I was on.
Good. Councilmember Mobley.
I don't have anything to report, but I would like to remind everybody that the cancer crusher, Pink Can, is coming up for renewal October 1st. I'm sure people have been getting emails on that, and it is a fundraiser for cancer crusher where you're paying $100 a year for the Pink Can. I did check with Recology, and they have almost about 100 left, if anybody else is interested in getting one of those. Just go through cancer crushers. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Well, I was out of town, and I unfortunately missed last week's Historical Commission meeting. I do have an HCOG meeting coming up. This report tonight reminded me of that, and so that will be coming up this Thursday also, and that's about all I have to report right now.
Thank you. Okay, Hops and Humboldt had their event, it went very well, not as many people attended as we hoped, but we still have some money to grant, and we're still going to be able to do our high school scholarships, so we're working on that. And then I had the honor of being able to be a judge for Fortuna's Homecoming Lip Sync Contest, Boys Cheerleading, and Floats. That was a lot of fun, they put a lot of work into that, and those boys are pretty good cheerleaders. And then I attended the CalCities meeting, the day had a chance to meet, I can't remember his name, Chris Rogers, who is running for Senate, I believe.
State Assembly.
State Assembly, okay, that's it. For our dis- For our district, so he was very interesting to talk to, very full of energy, and I think that's all I have on my, my list right now, too. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, meet, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.